Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask your guidance throughout this meeting that all of our thoughts and actions would reflect your will. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.03, portions A, 3, 4, and 7. At this time I call for a motion action to call for an executive session to be held November 19th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. At this time, because of a number of other obligations, I'd like to move item number 51 to the forefront of the agenda. And that will release our legal counsel to pursue another matter. So at this point, we're going to consider item number 51, discussion, possible action regarding the current status of litigation and potential settlement in the case of TX-2016-000893 related to the longstanding era litigation.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve direction given to the attorney during executive session.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to move forward. We probably ought to have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
51, thank you, Ms. Back to the regular order of business. Mr. Asplin? Discussion of petting, litigation, or claims in the band?
Nothing to report to the board this morning.
Thank you. Next, our committee reports. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you give me a minute? I'm having a problem with the computer pulling it up.
Sure, I'll call on you last. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you.
I have nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, Chairman Watson. I'd like to report on October 27th, the Laughlin Chamber of Commerce and the Bullhead City Chamber of Commerce held their annual community achievement awards. This is a very prestigious event that honors volunteerism and public service. This year, the Community Social Service Organization Award was handed to Mojave County Search and Rescue Team, Bullhead City Unit. It was very well deserved, and I was proud to be there to watch them accept it. On Thursday, November 1st, we held our first meeting of the Mojave County Public Lands and Recreation Committee. It was held as a workshop, and we went over some housekeeping information, including instruction by Ginny Anderson about the open meeting law, and also discussed how to move forward. We had five of the six commissioners, I'm hoping we approve today, attend the meeting, and of course, the reason for the urgency of this commission is to make recommendations to this board for the final comment period of the Kingman Travel Management Plan, which is due at the end of this month. The commission will meet officially this Thursday, November 8th, at 2:30 p.m. at the Public Works Building at 3715 Sunshine Drive. At that meeting, the commission hopes to discuss and finalize their recommendations. We have invited all elected officials, representatives of BLM, and I hope members of the public who wish to voice their opinions. Like all advisory commission meetings, a chairman will be elected, there will be a call to public, and anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item can sign up to speak on it. I believe the agenda will be available later today, or at the latest tomorrow morning, and you can find that on the Mojave County website on our meeting page. I wish to thank Steve Latafsky and Hal Barton for working so hard to put this together as quickly as they did. Special thanks to Barbara Hitzl and Ginny Anderson. I'm pleased at how quickly and thoroughly this county called this commission together. I also want to thank from District 1 Douglas Wisdom and Daniel Rodriguez, Robert Smith and Robert Seibert, representing my district, District 2, and Rick Swatz and Don Martin from District 4. I hope that Districts 3 and 5 appoint representatives as well. This commission is made up of very knowledgeable people who have volunteered to make a difference, and I believe they will. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Wakamoto?
We went down to CAP twice.
We went down to CAP twice in the last two weeks to hear their proposal of accepting or of purchasing 450,000 acre feet of water to alleviate their need to take Colorado River Water off the river for their continued groundwater replenishment district. We met with their advisory committee first, and then with the board, and I'm pleased to announce that they have accepted the proposal, and they are going to move forward with purchasing 450,000 acre feet of wet water in central Arizona, alleviating some of the problems that they have right now with looking at our water on the river. However, with the shortage coming, we have to keep an eye on them and make sure that the water is not transferred off the Colorado River.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop, if you wanted to...
Yes, I failed to note that I did attend the Arizona Transportation Board Meeting and spoke in support of the two Kingman crossings, and also called attention to the intersection of 93 and Pierce Ferry where the, where there's been quite a few accidents, and suggested that a flyover intersection would be appropriate at this time to alleviate those problems until I-11 comes through, and then that could be trans, trans into a full intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kennedy Public Land Steering Committee Monthly Agenda Call. Jonathan Sheffield, he's the Public Lands legislator, he gave me the update, the update on PILT and Secure Rural Schools. PILT is currently up in the air for 2019, but NACO officials are confident it will get approved and passed. Lawmakers are under a lot of political pressure to ensure it happens, and have told NACO officials, there's nothing to worry about. They feel it'll pass, and it will be fully funded again. This past year, the House and Senate bill had about $500 million in their appropriations bill for PILT. So far this year, Congress has passed five of the four appropriation bills, but not the interior one, which included PILT. There are still negotiating specific spending bills to roll it into a nomadism bill for the end of the year. Since Secure Rural Schools has been funded, the $500 million number we saw last year would be more than the current full funding, so they are estimating full funding should be in the $480 million range this year. Secure Rural Schools was reauthorized for two years. Last round of payments will go out next spring. NACO is currently talking with House and Senate members for a path forward on SRS. They are working on bipartisan package that would create an SRS fund. Senate action on public land deferred maintenance. The Senate, two weeks ago, passed their bill to tackle their deferred payment backlog for National Park Service, which is about $12 million of the $17 million backlog. Senate Energy Resource Committee approved the Restore Parks Act, which would take money from unspent energy and royalty dollars in the Treasury to fund the backlog. It would be used to address the maintenance on public land. The House passed their own version back in September. There are a few differences, but they should be able to work them out and get it spent. House and Senate action on Endangered Species Act modernization. House and Senate are both acting on this. Three weeks ago, they had a hearing, and many county officials testified. Two of the three bills that NACO testified in favor of moved forward in the committee. Powers Act moved forward, and so did the ESA Transparency and Responsibility Act. This has to do with lawsuits and payouts. It caps ESA attorney fees at $125 an hour. Vicky Christensen is appointed Chief of the U.S. Forest Service. She comes from the state forestry realm. She worked for state forestry in Washington and Arizona, and then the acting chief since March. The Endangered Species Act's regulator reform update, basically, it ended last month. Supervisor Hanberg discussed the Public Land Committee Platform Updates. Leadership of the Public Lands held a call in August to discuss updating the language to the platform each month. The committee is invited to take a look at the following sections and to offer ideas and input, written or verbal, on how to update the platform. For the call on October 18th, the committee will consider Sections A and D under federal land management, and we discussed each section of the platform in the following order during the committee conference call. Chairman said they're looking to form a small subcommittee to get over these, because trying to do it as a normal calls will cost too much time, so if a subcommittee is formed, they could just bring back their findings to the larger group. They voted to create a subcommittee to screen all of these, and they did have volunteers. So they're doing, October, they did Federal Land Management A through D. November, they're doing Federal Land Management E through K. December, I through L. January, M through N. February, federal lands payments in the entirety, and March and April, federal land use planning. Public, next to the Public Land Steering Committee call, Jonathan announced his wife's got a job in Tempe, Arizona, and he will be following her out there in late January, February. He will continue to work for NACO and run the Public Lands Committee. He will go to DC once a month, but is excited to be joining us out here in the West. That's all for Public Lands. Lake Havasu Metropolitan Plan Organization hosted the Rural Transportation Summit this past month. It was a great turnout with some very informative discussions. Vincent Gallegos, he's the Director of the MPO, used the Back to the Future team for the summit to reflect on past transportation needs and how the future of transportation may be a very different tomorrow. Major topic of discussion among everyone who attended was funding. Most transportation funding, both at the state and local levels, come from the highway use revenue funds, or HERF, which is funded through gasoline taxes, motor carrier taxes, vehicle license taxes, motor vehicle registration fees, and other miscellaneous fees. From '09 to '17, state lawmakers swept more than $7 million for Mojave County and $143 million from the entire state to help from the Department of Public Safety. This past session, HERF dollars were restored to counties, but just restoring HERF dollars is not enough to bring current county roads back up to standards. And when I say they restored it, they just started giving us our money again. They did not give us back the $7 million they swept. During the summit, a breakout session titled "The Long and Winding Road" was presented to those who chose to attend by Maricopa County's Director of Transportation Denise Lacy. She stated that in order to bring roads up to standards across Arizona would cost an estimated $5 billion. A recent report by the Arizona Association of County Engineers showed that there are over 20 million miles of roads maintained by counties in Arizona. The funding gap between what counties receive from HERF revenue to what they actually need to repair and maintain proper roadways is falling short by $2.2 billion. Lacy stated that to bring the current county roadways up to a state of good repair will cost roughly $1.65 billion. Mojave County's funding gap is roughly $307 million short. While funding, with funding being a major topic at the summit, several solutions were brought forward to those lawmakers in attendance to help bring up the problem. During the evening reception, State Senator Karen Phan and Representative Noel Campbell spoke and pledged to do what they can next year to make transportation issue on the forefront. Some of the solutions presented during the conference included an increase in gas tax, a miles driven tax, a rubber used fee, which would be on all tires, a transportation tax, and a 1% sales tax. Matthew Clark from Governor Ducey's office on transportation spoke about the governor's, how the governor's office is looking towards the future when it comes to funding solutions, with today's technology cars are becoming more connected, more automated, and more fuel efficient. According to the report, vehicles miles driven is up 23.5%, yet gas consumption is down 30%. Last time the gas tax was raised in Arizona was 1991. While some feel Arizona's gas tax needs to be raised, others feel raising the gas tax isn't doing enough to look at the future of transportation. I think the landscape of transportation is changing. In 20 years, we may have cars that run entirely on electricity or some other form of fuel. In 30 to 40 years, we may have completely self-driven cars. If we're going to come up with funding solution that will carry us 20 years and beyond, we have to consider this changing landscape. Sarri Rahiis Javinda with ACOM gave a breakout session during the summit on the future of autonomous vehicles and how municipalities can start planning for their arrival. While many differ on how fast automation, vehicles will be available for the masses, almost all in attendance agree that it's something we need to be planning for. Some of the concerns brought up during the breakout sessions were who ultimately is responsible if something were to go wrong? The passenger, the automaker, or the owner? Can individuals drink alcohol inside their vehicle? If no, what other limitations should be put on passengers? What new laws will need to be created? Can the vehicles be on the road completely driverless or with only, or with only minors in the vehicle? There are several concerns that will need to be addressed as autonomous vehicles move forward, but with over four different companies in Arizona testing these vehicles, they will be more unlikely, be more before we come to the final conclusion. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. My report this morning...
Has left the conference.
Supervisor Johnson has left the conference. My report this morning centers around the Central Arizona Project. We've made a number of trips to Phoenix concerning the water issues, concerning the Central Arizona Project, and their assurances to get water in the future. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Wakamoto for the hard work that she's done over the past year and a half. And without Supervisor Wakamoto's input, the HeLa Nation would have not been talking to Central Arizona Project. That was a heavy lift. Everyone at Central Arizona Project know...
Has joined the conference.
...that Mojave County was instrumental in solving this problem, and they rewarded us last Thursday with a unanimous decision for the purchase of the HeLa India water rights. And I tell you what, at this point in time, I would like to give Supervisor Wakamoto a sound of applause. For her hard work and diligence, an extraordinary achievement. And this is the largest purchase of water in CAP's history. Moving forward with $95 million contract over 25 years is a huge decision to make. And had it not been for Supervisor Wakamoto, that would not have occurred. Supervisor Wakamoto, I thank you. This might possibly be your last meeting.
Could be.
And it's been a pleasure working with you on all the water issues, and you must have something in common with President Trump. Working night and day, and all day and all night, going, traveling, and knowing all these other people has made it a real pleasure to work with. Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure for me to work for this community, because this community has been kind to us as a family, and we love this community, as many people in this audience do. And it's been a pleasure to see what we can do to protect the economic development in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you. County managers' report. Mr. Hendricks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to say that it's been publicly, that it's been a sincere pleasure for myself and my staff to have met and to have worked with Supervisor Wakamoto. She's a credit to this area, and she's done a remarkable job. I also want to point out and thank her for her tenacity and extremely hard work with the Colorado River issues and to trying and protect the future of the Colorado River communities. So my sincere gratitude and thanks to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Item number four, approval of the August 20th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of minutes. Any further discussion there being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Come to the point of our agenda where we have call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak for them. They're located in the back of the room. This must be done prior to the meeting. Pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes, a public body may make an open call to the public during the public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner of restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open public call, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on our future agenda. However, members of the public shall not discuss or take legal actions on matters raised during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. We have several people signed up for call to the public this morning. Michael Boone?
Last meeting, Ms. Angus asked me about my background...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L., Boone, B.O.O.N.E., 2210, Palaverie North, Lake Havasu.
Thank you.
So last meeting, Ms. Angus asked about my knowledge of how the government works regarding appointments. I didn't get a chance to answer her, so I thought I'd answer her now. I've been appointed twice to supervisory and middle management positions within two different municipalities. Number one, I had to take a proficiency test, and I had to competitively compete with other applicants. Number two, I had to have every educational requirement, every required state certification before I was appointed to that position. And number three, I didn't have anybody in my family promoting me. Number two, the ladies up in the public records area are working extremely hard to answer the volumes of public records that have come through, including mine. However, one public record, actually two, that are sticking out that still haven't been answered. Number one, I asked for a copy of the epistle that Mr. Hendricks read in on the day that he was disavowing how the investigation occurred with HR Director. That should have been a pretty simple one to comply with, just sending me the letter. And number two, back in March, I asked for information on Legacy Park, and after seeing item 54, I kind of know why that happened. I understand, after reviewing Mr. Hendricks's contract, that he is an actual employee of ESI, not the county, and he's loaned to the county as an independent contractor. But it appears in talking to various county employees and listening to the public, he's acting more like an employee than acting on direct direction from the board, making decisions, personnel decision, et cetera, et cetera. Like all other vendors that are required, I'm wondering if in fact, ESI has indemnified Mojave County for his or any of those other folks' conduct, should something end up in litigation, which most likely will. And finally, Mr. Hendricks never answered the question, does he get deferred conversation, excuse me, deferred compensation, or any other forms of remuneration back from ESI for all the people that he seems to be referring to ESI that subsequently comes to work for the county? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Morgan?
Chairman Watson, board, my name is Jem Morgan. I am a District 1 constituent. And there are two issues that I'd like to, of water poisoning that I want to address. There was a recent town meeting in Meadview where one of the tree farmers came and spoke to the people there and publicly owned up to the fact that they are using pesticides in their tree farm. The people in Meadview are extremely concerned about this, as am I. That pesticide leaches down into our aquifer. There's no escaping that. So I don't understand why the county would allow that kind of activity. It leaches down into our aquifer where we all end up drinking the poisoned water. The second issue... The second issue that I'd like to address is, um, the Colorado City uranium mining situation. And the people up in Colorado City, they, the people themselves are unaware that this board has authorized, um, potential movement to put a uranium mine up in their, uh, their area. They're unaware. I'm asking this council to, um, understand its fiduciary responsibility to inform those people that if this board authorizes the uranium mine up there, that under Arizona state law, that will, um, privilege, um, the, the mining to have un, uh, unaccountable and unlimited access to the water. The aquifers up in Colorado City that could end up draining their aquifers and worse, you know, toxically poisoning with, um, uranium in the water sources up there. They have a right to know that before this board authorizes the mining, uh, up there. They already have hot water sources, um, up in their area that they need to have special, um, filtering in order to be able to use it. So, I'm just asking this board to please follow through with your fiduciary responsibility on that. The other issue is, um, now that the, um, the election is almost over, I will have time and energy to devote to the petition process for the, um, active management, um, petition, uh, ballot initiative. We may not be able to stop the damage that's already been done by what this board has allowed in terms of the, uh, commercial agriculture on our aquifer, but we can, uh, we can at least stop future, uh, commercial agriculture, uh, through this AMA process. So, um, I will be working diligently to create the PAC with, um, a multi-partisan group of people so that we can get that on the initiative for the next election in 2020. Thank you very much.
I have a person by the name of Janet that lives on, uh, in Golden Valley. I cannot read your last name.
Jones.
Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Janet Jones. I live at 365 South Bowes Road in Golden Valley. I am a small block in between Highway 68 and Ship. I'm right off the highway. I'm not in the middle of the boonies. Basically, why I'm here today is we are in a crisis situation. I am getting nowhere with anyone as far as Mojave County, um, getting road maintenance. They are telling me that, uh, they don't own the road. I don't pay taxes on the road. Uh, there are several items, but basically what it is, is the wash at the end of our street that runs the entire valley is no longer a wash. It's a cliff. We called the Golden Valley Fire Department Chief to come out to the, to check it out. He said, "Emergency vehicles can no longer get on your street." We have four senior citizens. Two of them are disabled. One can't get her oxygen delivered. Culligan Water refuses to deliver water. So, it, it's, that's an easy fix. We can go into town and pick it up. But there's only six residents on this very small block, and now, not only the cliff at this end, the other end is totally destroyed. We were told, we petitioned the county, we were told to pick up the rocks, and they would come out and they would take care of grading our road. That never happened. I have been in contact, I've lived there for 25 years. I've been in contact more than once and for years, and no one is wanting to help us. And now, it's come to a point where both of my neighbors are disabled women. Their husbands have both passed away. I had the neighbor on the other side, um, he's by himself, and he's a senior citizen. I am getting ready to retire. There's only two families on there that are young. One of them's a single mom raising three kids. We can't afford to contact a construction company to come out and be in constant contact with road maintenance from Mojave County in order to fix this road. And that's what they're telling us we have to do. We can't afford that. We're on limited incomes, and it's this very small block. It's right off of Highway 68, and it's becoming impossible now. I have a Jeep. I can make it through this. I have to put it into four-wheel drive. I can't make it through the other end. Bus transportation, um, anything medical, it, it, they can't get through. Now, we're coming up on winter, and we're in crisis, gonna be in crisis situation because we all have propane. The propane company will not deliver propane. Their, their trucks can't get through. I need help. I need to know what, what I need to do. I need to get on the agenda to, to get my neighbors in here, and, and we need to talk to someone to get this fixed.
Ms. Jones, we can give you the proper protocol. I'll have somebody from the road department get you that information on the possibility of tertiary or, or permanent maintenance. So, I'll have someone from our office get in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you very much-
Thank you.
...for listening to me.
Good morning. Uh, Mary McCord Robinson, 2626 North Twin Hills Road, Kingman. Chairman and Supervisors, as you may or may not know, I too am a candidate running. I've spent the last several months canvassing, phone calling, and attending many forums throughout the county. Two things that I heard consistently that I wanted to share, and that's the positive thing, the things that this board is doing. Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Angus, every single door I knock, someone has a comment in your favor and appreciates and values your ability to hear them out, whether you agree or not, give direction, but the fact that you're supporting them is recognized and appreciated. I have been asked numerous times to, please, if I have an opportunity, to share that with both of you, and I'm here today to do that. Colorado City would like more sheriff patrols. The intersection at 93 going into Chloride and, and Dolan Springs is clearly a priority. Open range is clearly a priority, and I know the two of you have a meeting set up in a couple weeks. Oftentimes, we're always here to talk about what's not being done, things we don't like. I'm here today just to pass the word back to you and say thank you on behalf of your constituents.
Thank you, Ms. McCord. Yeah, I believe that, the last person signed up for call to the public.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendricks.
Mr. Chairman. I do believe I need to address, uh, on Mr. Boone, uh, his allegation, or at least his question, that, uh, for some reason, ESI gives me a kickback. Uh, if I understand correctly, there's one other individual that works for the, that is employed by ESI that actually is under contract with the county. And, uh, I'm not aware of any program or, or, uh, practice or any other thing regarding ESI providing any monetary, uh, incentives, uh, that, uh, for, um, encouraging individuals to work for them and contract with the county. That doesn't mean that they don't have them, but they haven't made that information available to me, and I, I have no idea where that came from. But, uh, I wanted to make clear, there's one other individual working for ESI that actually is under contract with the county, and no definite, no, I don't receive any additional compensation for encouraging employees to work for ESI. I hope that answers your question. On the other one, uh, I don't review any information that goes out to Mr. Boone on his public information request, but in this particular instance, I will make sure on his latest request that he gets a copy of the, um, document that he referred to that I, uh, that I wrote for my, uh, County Manager's Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to Janet Jones's comments about the maintenance or lack of maintenance on her, uh, road bowels. It's my understanding in a conversation with Ms. Jones that she has gone to Public Works and, and taken out a petition for tertiary road maintenance. She was not happy with that process, complained to my office, and I did do a personal visit, uh, at her residence and drove her road in just two-wheel drive. It, uh, it definitely is in need of maintenance, but it's not a cliff, and, and there's access coming in from another direction that's, that's available for emergency vehicles.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to clarify, the lady was brought up Colorado City and their aquifer and mining. Mojave County doesn't authorize mining. Um, there happens to be that ditch called the Grand Canyon between where mining is going to take place in Colorado City. Um, it's been proven that there's no aquifers on this side of the Grand Canyon that will be affected by, uh, any of the mining that's proposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. I'm, I'm sure if Ms. Morgane would like to visit with me, I can give you more information as to those mining activities in that area, the aquifers in that area, and Colorado City. At this point, we'll move to the consent agenda. Item five through 40, uh, we'll be acting on these items with, uh, one motion, with the exception of those that are withdrawn. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to withdraw from the consent agenda?
Thirty-six, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bishop?
Um, that was the one I wanted to address as well, so none others.
Okay. Supervisor Angus?
That was mine, too.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
No.
Very good. And, uh, I will rely on your judgment on thirty-six also. So, Chair, would entertain a motion for the consent agenda, items five through 40, with the exception of number thirty-six.
Some of, second.
We have a motion and a second. For the consent agenda, item five through 40, with the exception of thirty-six. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Onto item thirty-six. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just noticed that we didn't have, um, any value associated with, um, the proposed giveaway of, of property of Mojave County, and, and I think we need to have that there, um, before we do any giveaways. And then, I'm not sure that, you know, while it's a good idea, that, that equipment's been sitting there for, what, 20 years and hasn't been used, um, that it would work for the, for the park because it is set up for cooking for, you know, hundreds of, of the people at a time, so you can't do part of the heating at, at one time. You can't just cook seven hamburgers or, or whatever. But, but that's all. I just didn't see a list of the equipment, and I thought we probably need that before we make any, any movement. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, and I'll have more information here in just a minute. Supervisor Angus?
Okay, yeah. Um, my, my question is, I, I, I think this is a good idea. I, I don't know why it's taken so long, but, um, the decision to give it to the Mojave County Fairgrounds Event Center, was it put out? Were there any other places that it could have went? Or was this just a decision made because of convenience or the location or?
Well, actually, the equipment will remain in the possession of Mojave County.
Right.
Mojave County Fairgrounds is owned by Mojave County, so we're just transferring this equipment that is usable to the event center, uh, if it's, uh, at all doable.
Right. So, I guess-
We have, uh, the locals are optimists. They're putting up $5,000 towards the effort, and, uh, others have shown an interest in possibly, um, putting an addition on one of the exhibit buildings for specifically the kitchen only.
Oh, okay.
So, it's kind of, it's kind of a work in progress, but, uh, we're not giving the equipment away.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Any further questions?
I believe you just answered my question. Will the fairgrounds be able to accept the equipment, um, based on the size of the current building, where the kitchen's located? And you just answered that with the donation from the Sir Optimist and probably others.
And probably others. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Then I make a motion to accept item thirty-six. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the, uh, acceptance of item thirty-six. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Onto item forty-one, open the public hearing, uh, stage of this agenda. Item forty-one, open the public hearing for discussion, possible action, approve the addition of a $50 one-time fee to the sheriff's fee schedule for the sheriff's labor adjudication program called SLAP. Anyone wishing to speak to item number forty-one? Sheriff Schuster.
Good morning, everyone. Chairman Watson, members of the board. This is just in follow-up to, uh, the actual line item that was created a few months back. I believe you'll recall that there were some, uh, misgivings on the way it was publicated, so we were not able to address this, uh, when the program was initiated. The SLAP program's a fantastic, uh, program designed to facilitate a great many things for the county. Uh, first and foremost, it deals well with our overcrowding issue in the jail. The program is designed to take non, or low, low-level, nonviolent, uh, offenders and place them in to a labor program to beautify our communities in lieu of incarceration. This is a very good thing. In order to make this program successful, we do need a funding source. That's where the fee comes in. We're asking for a one-time fee from each individual offender, uh, to be processed at the direction of the court, through the county, into the sheriff's fund.
Questions for the sheriff? Sounds like we got a winner.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff Schuster, what's the average time a sentenced, uh, person would have on this crew?
If I heard the question right, Supervisor Johnson, the average time of sentence?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's been varying. We've seen anywhere from, uh, a one-week period to a six-week period. We've had over 40 or close to 40 individuals already sentenced to the program, uh, since inception, so it's, it's, it's moving along pretty well.
Uh, what's it costing us for the deputy or corrections officer per day to supervise and chauffeur these prisoners?
We're using, uh, existing staff through the jail. A lot of the, uh, costs associated is in-house cost. We aren't, uh, going above any expenditure within our budget to accommodate the program.
And what is the, are we furnishing meals?
We are. That's part of the fee.
And, uh, are those meals taken out when the people go out, or do we have somebody deliver those?
No. The meals, Supervisor Johnson, are created, uh, in the jail, uh, facility. Uh, and to give you a little background so you have a better understanding, each and every individual sentenced to the program meets at the county main jail in Kingman, uh, during the appropriate time schedule, which currently is Monday through Friday from eight to four. Uh, and they go out collectively in a group supervised. At that point, uh, food and, uh, water is provided throughout the day.
What would be our, what's the average cost going to be per day for wear and tear, fuel, insurance, et cetera, on our vehicles, you know?
Well, there's going to be minimal cost Supervisor Johnson. Uh, we believe the cost associated with wear and tear on the vehicles is significantly less than the incarceration cost, uh, in lieu of this program.
Um, you probably won't be able to answer this because it fluctuates, but do we have any idea what the startup, I guess if you've already started, what the startup equipment cost and ongoing budget to maintain is going to be?
Startup cost, uh, we are invested at this point with a new trailer at the cost of $4,800 and about $1,200 worth of tools and equipment. So, we're into it $6,000, and that's, uh, again, the purpose of the fee, to recoup the startup and continue, uh, having a funding source, uh, moving forward. and continue having a funding source moving forward.
Are we incurring dump fees every day, and when is the dumping occurring? During the eight-to-four shift or after shift?
The dumping is, Supervisor Johnson, the dumping is occurring during the work shift. It varies depending on the nature of trash collected during that period. And yes, we do pay dump fees if we use the local facilities.
Are we doing cleanup at county facilities to save the taxpayer money? And how much trash could be at our facility if that's all we're doing?
We're doing much, Supervisor Johnson, we're doing much more than just county-building cleanup, but yes, that is something that we've already done. It's something that is available to all county properties, city properties. The intent of the program is to beautify our communities while affording these offenders the opportunity to serve their sentence in a productive manner. So, yes, we are doing county properties as well as properties around the county. Strike that areas around the county. We're not doing private property. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. I get the lay on here. So, we are doing areas inside incorporated areas, not just unincorporated areas?
Supervisor Johnson, that's correct.
All right. Do these prisoners have any at-home monitoring, or they're just, they show up eight to four, and that's the only kind of supervision they have?
Supervisor Johnson, there is no at-home monitoring. This is a, very similar to a restitution program. Community service is the main focus, so there is no home monitoring.
And I understand what you're trying to do, but, you know, but I just don't think we tax people, the regular folks, to clean up the desert lands and, you know, lands belonging to the fed or state, or to clean up highways. I believe if you do a crime, you go to jail, and that's the cost of us running it. And I understand you're, you know, you're getting up to, you know, or we might have to add on to the jail, but just my own personal thing is, if you do the crime, you do the time. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to thank the sheriff. I think this is a wonderful program, and it should have been started years ago, but it's my understanding it's going to save the county money, it's going to save the taxpayer money, and it's going to beautify our deserts and some of our properties for low-income people, elderly. It's, you know, I'm guessing on that, but it's what I have in my mindset as to how this program would work. So, I just wanted to thank you and wish you all the luck for success.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. If I could comment to Supervisor Johnson, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
In agreeance, I'm certainly, I don't want to take away from this day in understanding that the sheriff or his staff does not want to put criminals in jail. That is certainly not the case. And Supervisor Johnson, as a law enforcement officer, a couple, four decades ago, I believe it is now, probably understands that as well, thus the statement. The point being is, people commit crime, they need to be held accountable, and we're talking about very minor offenses. Offenses that by the time they reach the jail incarceration portion, they're maybe ten days in jail. Often, those times are suspended down to one day in jail with time served. We're trying to do something positive with those type of offenders. And so, we're very proud of the program. We are extremely pleased the direction it's going. And, yeah, if we can get back to the community along the way, I look at it as a win-win.
Thank you, Sheriff Schuster. Any further questions for the sheriff? Sounds to me like a dynamic program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and...
And then I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
The hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any further discussion?
No, Mr. Chair. The only reason I'll be voting no is I think the $50 is way too cheap. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll call a roll on that vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number forty-two and forty-three has come before us, and Mr. Walsh has requested that we continue these two items because the advertising was incorrect. The lady that normally does our advertising, as I understand it, was unable to perform that function properly, either being on vacation or something, but Tim will...
Chairman Watson, thank you. Items forty-two and forty-three, unfortunately, the advertising requirements for those two items were not met. So, we do have the advertising being completed for your November nineteenth meeting, so we would ask that the board continue those two items for the November nineteenth meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions? Chair would entertain a motion to continue item forty-two and forty-three.
Motion to continue item forty-two and forty-three?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue item number forty-two and forty-three. Onto item number forty...
We need to vote on it, on the motion. There's been a motion and a second.
Okay. Any further questions?
And just to clarify, it's to continue to a specific date, correct?
That is correct. We would, it would be cleaner if they would continue it to November nineteenth.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to continue items forty-two and forty-three to the November nineteenth meeting.
And I'll second.
amended second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does that give enough time for the advertising?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, that would allow us sufficient time to provide the advertising required.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the next meeting. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto item forty-four. I'll open the public hearing for discussion, possible action, to approve the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-137, denying an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan of Assessors' Parcel Number 40225070 from low-density residential land use designation to general commercial land use designation, and an amendment to the Virgin River Community Area Plan from low-density residential land use designation to general commercial land use designation. In the scenic vicinity north of Rain Cloud Drive, west of Aravada Road in Mojave County, the commission recommended denial by a seven-to-one vote. Commissioner Neal voted against the motion. I have no one else signed up to speak to item number forty-four, but I will give that opportunity to anyone now. Anyone wishing to speak to item forty-four? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item number forty-four.
Chairman Watson, I will make a motion that we deny this as recommended by the commission.
We have a motion, and I'll second the motion to deny the amendment. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item forty-four or forty-five, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-138, denying a rezone of assessor's parcel 40225070 from an agricultural residential zone to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone to allow for equipment and construction material storage. In the scenic vicinity north of Rain Cloud Drive, west of Aravada Road, this is in northern Mojave County, Arizona, commission recommended denial by a vote of seven-to-one. Commissioner Neal voted against the motion. I have no one signed up to speak to item number forty-five, but I will entertain that now. Anyone wishing to speak to item forty-five? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item forty-five and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, again, I'll recommend denying a rezone of assessor parcel number 40225070 as recommended by the commission.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yep.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item forty-six, I'll open the public hearing for discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-139, amend the Mojave County General Plan of Assessors' Parcel Number 402-15-009 from a general commercial land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation, and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from general commercial land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation for assessor's parcel number 402-15-009. In the scenic vicinity, south of Brigham Trail, east of Zion Park Road, Mojave County, commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one wishing to speak, signed up to speak, to item forty-six, but I will let anyone in the audience speak to that at this time. Be no one to exercise that, so I will close the public hearing for item number forty-six and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to adopt Board Supervisory Resolution Number 2018-139, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan of Assessor's Parcel Number 40215009.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call a roll.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number forty-seven, at this point, I'll open the public hearing, and that's for the discussion, possible action, for the approval, adoption of Board Resolution 2018-140 for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 402-15-009 from a residential recreation ten-acre minimum lot size zone to an agricultural residential zone and a agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size to allow for a minor land division in the scenic vicinity south of Brigham Trail, east of Zion Park Road in Mojave County, Arizona. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item forty-seven, but I will ask the audience, anyone wishing to speak to item forty-seven? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for forty-seven and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve Board Supervisors Resolution Number 2018-140, the rezone of assessor's parcel 40215009.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item forty-eight, I'll open the public hearing for discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-104 for special use permit for the assessor's parcel number 402-32-173 to allow for an off-premises sign in the CH2, general commercial highway frontage zone in the Beaver Dam vicinity, southwest of Palm Drive and northwest of Fleet Street. This is in the Arizona Strip, Mojave County. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have two people here to speak to that item.
Thank you, Chairman. Paul Newbold, representing the applicant insight advertising, 2604 Van Ross in South Jordan, Utah. It's my second trip down here before the board, and with an unanimous approval, we're just looking forward to being able to move forward with the permit and get back to business with the billboard. So, I just wanted to be here if there were any questions from anyone before the approval on this.
Question for Mr. Newbold? Thank you, sir. The person I have signed up to speak to this item is Mr. Jeff Goldberg.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board. I'm Jeff Goldberg, Bruno Brooks &amp; Goldberg here in Kingdon, 730 East Beale Street. I represent Desert Springs Secure Storage LLC, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the request for this SUP. To give you a little bit of background, Desert Springs owns a property adjacent to the property that's subject to this application. There has been an SUP issued for my client's property on the adjacent, that's adjacent to this, since 1994, and there's a sign that's existed there since 1994. My client would like to continue to use the SUP and continue to maintain a sign on its property. The issue is that you have two competing users with the applications that's before you that would violate if both of, both properties had the sign, it would violate the 500-foot separation rule. That's the issue here today. And the problem is that Mr. Newbold and his group is in a rush to tear down the sign on my client's property to get a sign after this SUP is granted on the applicant's property. Although this was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, two important things have happened since that time. The most important of which was a lawsuit was filed last Thursday in which the court, my client seeking several forms of relief from the court, one of which is to determine what rights, if any, Insight has to maintain a sign or remove a sign on my client's property. The second of which is to seek an injunction against Mr. Newbold's group from placing the sign on the adjacent property that's a subject of this request, which would, in effect, make it impossible for my client to continue to utilize the SUP that was issued in 1994. The second important thing is the very fear that my client had that he would be in a rush to try to tear down the sign on my client's property, so he'd be in a position to not violate the rule and get his sign built as soon as possible if this SUP is granted. Turned out to be true. Last week, he attempted to go on to my client's property and remove the sign and had to be stopped by law enforcement, and the sheriff did, in fact, go out there and told him to stay off the property until there's a court order granted. So... So while we have pending litigation, we ask the board to, at a minimum, defer the granting of this SUP request until the litigation's resolved, and we do have a court order kind of identifying and solidifying what the party's rights are. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number forty-eight? Okay, there's no one wishing to speak to item forty-eight?
I have a question. If this is...
Wakamoto?
If this is in litigation, does that stop us from moving forward? Mr. Esplin?
No, it would not stop us from moving forward. There's no court order that prohibits the court, there's no court order presently, to my knowledge, that would prohibit the board today from taking action on the item, whether to approve it or deny it.
I have a question, and excuse me, I'm not that bright, but how could somebody go on someone else's property and take something down?
Well, that, now, that is a question that will be addressed in the court order, and probably Jeff will be jumping, jumping to try to answer that question, but that's going to be the issue for the court to decide whether they can go on to the property to remove it or not, and that'll probably be shaken out in the court action.
Right, that has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Exactly. All, the question is before the board today is whether to issue the special use permit or not.
Okay.
That's the, that's the single issue before, before the board today.
I think it would be wise for us to consider Mr. Goldberg's request to continue this item till after the litigation is solved.
Chairman Watson, if I may just add one point, the special use permit would, would still, issuing the special use permit would still keep them under the zoning ordinance, which requires a five hundred foot separation between signs. So approving this, this special use permit, basically, it allows for a permit to be issued on this property, but if the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which require five hundred feet between signs, isn't met, a building permit would not be issued. So I just wanted to share that information, and currently, I'll try not to muddy it too much, but currently where the existing sign sits on the owner represented by Mr. Goldberg, that current location would prohibit a sign being placed on this property in question. If that sign were to be moved to the other side of that property, it would allow for a sign to be, to be placed on this property. So basically, what this does is this, this, this action would allow for a sign to be built on this property if it met the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which requires that five hundred foot separation.
So with the issuance of the special permit, they cannot build a new sign as long as the existing sign is still standing?
That is correct.
Nope, but I'm prepared to make a motion that...
Let me close the public hearing first.
Okay.
At this point, I'll close the public hearing for forty-eight.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve Board of Supervisor Resolution twenty eighteen dash one zero four, the special use permit for parcel number four oh two three two one seven three.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item forty-eight. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Walsh. If the owners of the property were to move their sign, how many feet?
Basically, there's a requirement of five hundred foot separation between billboards. So currently, they're on the side of their property closest to the property that's, that's being considered today. If it were moved to the opposite side of that property, there, there would be sufficient room to allow for both billboards.
Okay, and my second question is, is there a possibility to waive the five hundred foot separation rule? Or is that written in stone?
That's, that's in the zoning ordinance, so the zoning ordinance does require that five hundred foot separation.
So we, there's no way to overrule that? Make an exception to?
If we were to go through and, and change the zoning ordinance is what it would require.
Just a question. I'll assume it's written in stone. Okay. All right. Well, it appears to me that we have a situation where we have a property owner with property rights that would like to retain his property rights through the use of his sign, while the lessee, I would suppose, with the prior sign, wants to tear their sign down and locate it at another location. Is that correct?
I'll, I'll try and give a clear Reader's Digest version. There's an existing sign on the adjacent property owned by the applicant for this, this current, this current proposal before...
Adjacent property?
Yes, so, so the applicant for this current parcel owns a sign that's located on the adjacent property. He's looking to relocate his sign onto the adjacent property that's being considered today. My understanding is the owner of that, the, of the existing, the owner of the property that the existing sign's on right now wishes to keep that sign there. There's an existing special use permit allowing for that sign in that location. That, that's pretty much where, where it stands. The, the existing property on which the sign is located has a special use permit, is, is legally permitted to have a sign there right now. The owner, however, of that sign is not the property owner. The owner of the sign is, is Mr. Newbold, which, who wishes to move that sign over to the adjacent property, on, on which he's applying for today. Now, if, if, if that sign stays put, it would prohibit the adjacent property, the one being considered today, from, from being able to erect a new sign.
Right.
However, if a new sign were placed on the opposite side of that property, it would allow for a sign to be placed on the opposite side of the, the property being considered today. Hope that's a little bit clearer than mud.
I think you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Goldberg may want to add.
Two important points, Chairman Watson and Board members. First, my client has already got a building permit to construct the sign, once this sign's removed, on, on its property. Second of all, Mr. Walsh talked about the possibility of moving the sign to a different point on the property. It's not physically, or it's not practical from a cost perspective because of the, there's storage units on this property, they would have to actually move storage units to create a, a location for that sign, so it's not very feasible to do that. It's just not economically feasible. But I did want to let this board know that there is a, a building permit was issued to my client when this sign's removed, and, and that's the very problem we're in here, that it's kind of a race to, to build the sign. Mr. Newbold is in a race to tear it down, to take his sign away, and my client has this gun to their head to, to get a sign built on there. We are seeking a restraining order right now to, to kind of put a stop on everything, but with this SUP being issued, it just exacerbates the problem. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goldberg? Mr. Newbold?
We, we've owned this sign for the past twenty-four years. Began with a lease on the property twenty-four years ago, it was a thirty-year lease, with a, it was a fifteen-year initial term and a fifteen-year renewal term, which occurred in twenty-ten, and we, the, the permits and everything associated with this sign was issued to my company in nineteen ninety-four, paid for by my company in nineteen ninety-four. We built the structure and operated it and, and for the past twenty-four years, but these, these folks came in and purchased the property and attempted to purchase the sign. They made, made an offer on the sign to buy it, which we declined, and because it wasn't feasible for us to accept that offer, and we're in the sign business and want to keep our inventory and et cetera, and so we had an opportunity to, then they, they actually requested that we move the sign. They, you know, attempted to break the lease with us, and rather than fight about it, we decided to move the sign over. We had an opportunity to move it next door. We had to apply for this SUP in order to move the sign. They do have a building permit to rebuild my sign, attempting to utilize my permits that were issued to me in nineteen ninety-four, but their sign being able to be built is contingent upon my sign coming down, so, and I understand that I do still have to get a building permit to build my sign after the SUP is approved. And so, well, I guess we'll see how that shakes out, but the, the pending litigation doesn't have anything to do, I don't think, with your decision here today. We're just requesting to be able to move our sign from one legal location to another legal location and continue our business as we have in the past, over the past twenty-four years, and so that's what we'd like to do, and I assume that you're going to approve it based on the unanimous approval of the commission today.
Thank you, Mr. Newbold.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson, if I can make just one point of clarification?
Mr. Esplin?
The decision that the board is making today is not to move one sign to another location. That's not the question, so I just, I want to clarify that with Mr., Mr., this gentleman's statement. We are not approving or, or denying the request to move a sign to another location. What is being presented to the board is whether to grant an SUP, yeah, special use permit for this particular parcel. So just want to make sure that we understand that, that it is not, we're not saying we are moving, that we are granting him permission to move a sign from one location to another. That's not what is being debated here.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, that, 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 it keeps on coming up, that idea that we're, we're granting approval to move over a sign, we're not. That's not, that's not before the board. What is before the board is whether to grant an SUP for this particular parcel.
For a parcel different that is owned by the new owners.
Correct.
And it's within five hundred feet of this sign that the lessee had a lease on from the new owner's property.
Well, we don't know where the, where the location of the new sign will be, but most likely it will be within the five hundred radius, because as Mr. Goldberg pointed out, it's not feasible to, even though you could put the sign somewhere else with, outside the five hundred, five hundred feet radius, it's not feasible, it's not likely going, going to happen. Based on the plans that have been submitted, it appears as if the sign will be within that five hundred radius, which, that they cannot, they cannot build the sign within the five hundred radius, they have to put down the first, the first sign has to be removed, if that's what they wish to do.
Correct. So in my mind, in my mind, the property owner will be impacted by this decision because his sign will become, he will not be able to advertise on that property at that location.
That is...
His sign is removed, and that applicant puts their sign within the five hundred foot radius. Is that correct?
I would say that's a, I would, yes, I would say that's correct, because the sign has been removed, and now there's a second sign that's up, and now that five hundred radius would apply to that second sign. And so as, as Mr. Goldberg pointed out, it really is, it's a conundrum of sorts. How quickly can the sign go up? How quickly can the sign go down? And this is going to be one of the first times I'm ever going to say this, but I am actually grateful that they filed, that some kind of court action has been filed, because there's going to be some clarity through the court action, hopefully. We're, I, I'm not saying, I'm not for or against either side, we're trying to be as neutral and unbiased as possible and treat both sides fairly and equal, but I'm hopeful in that court action, somehow there's going to be clarity on one side, and be able to clarify.
And that was my first indication to, to the board, was I would, I would prefer a continuance on this until after it's litigated. But...
I, I don't know, I, I don't know whether that's a good idea or not, I don't, and I defer.
That's just my preference, but we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
No.
Chairman Watson?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Down to item number forty-nine, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of the revised fee schedule for the Mojave County Parks effective January one, two thousand and nineteen. Permitting fees, modifications, increases and decreases, fee elimination for services no longer offered, and fee restructuring during summer peak season, Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend at the Davis Camp Park. I have no one signed up to speak to item number forty-nine. Although that doesn't mean someone in the audience may want to. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item forty-nine? Okay. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing for item forty-nine and entertain a motion for...
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? We may want to wait for just a minute for Supervisor Bishop to return. We have been at it for a couple of hours, haven't we?
Yeah.
We may want to take a, a break before we get into the regular agenda. I see our clerk counting the, the seconds on the clock, so... We have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of item number forty-nine.
Okay.
And I've called for the questions. Appears that there are none. So, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Before we go into the regular agenda, we've been at this for over, for many of us, three hours now, I'd like to propose that we do a ten-minute break. I'd like to propose that we do a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Is that 10 minutes up?
Oh, God, yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's saddle back up and get rocking and rolling here. We're on the regular agenda. Item number 50. Discussion, possible action, acknowledged receipt of and referred to public works, a petition filed pursuant to Mojave County ordinance 2016-09 to consider including in the Mojave County tertiary road maintenance system, subject to meeting all applicable requirements and subsequent to board approval, an approximate 622-foot section of wagon trail road from the city of Kingman City limits to the end of the roadway located in Fort Beal. I have no one signed up to speak to item 50. I will let anyone in the audience speak if they'd care to. No one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing for item number 50.
There's no public hearing.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item 50.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Supervisor Johnson?
Has joined the conference.
Supervisor Johnson, we're voting on item number 50. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 51 has already been dealt with. Item number 52. Discussion, possible action. Approve the memorandum of understanding between the Bureau of Land Management, Mojave County, providing for the Mojave County to be a cooperating agency under the National Environmental Policy Act for the purpose of preparing a resource management plan. Amendment related to the Canab Creek area of critical environment concern in conjunction with the environmental impact statement for the larger Lake Powell Pipeline project and authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding. Have no one signed up to speak to this item? And it's just a matter of...
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And second? Any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 53. Discussion, possible action. Authorize the county administration to apply for membership in the Colorado River Water Users Association and approve and fund Lois Wakamoto to attend the annual CRWA conference and report back to the board. Membership is estimated at $30 for three months and the conference registration travel and board is estimated at less than $1,000. Source of funds is the general administration budget. I have one person that would like to speak to this item.
Chairman Watson, I'm going to recuse myself. So I'm going to leave.
Thank you. I have one person that would like to speak to this item.
Michael Boone, 2210 Palomar North, North Lake, oh, North Lake Havasu. I'm concerned why our incoming elected supervisor is not going to this meeting. It would be more beneficial for him to go so he can hit the ground running and be able to serve his constituents if he was brought in as soon as possible in many of these issues. And I don't believe, I believe he'll be installed by that time period. So I'm curious why he wasn't selected to go versus an outgoing person. And I think he definitely should be, the board should approve those funds and allow Ron Gould to go. I think we'd be better representative in the upcoming years by having him be unable to hit the ground running early. Thank you.
Mr. Boone, you're probably correct. And I would invite our new supervisor, Gould, to attend that conference if he so desires. He will have those funds available to him under his, I think it's District Number Five Available Funds. Is that correct? We get the opportunity to have the experience of the person that is currently doing and also bring Supervisor Gould up to, up to snuff, so to speak. So with that, Supervisor Gould, you're certainly welcome to go to attend that conference also.
Chairman Watson, I'd like to, again, sort of reiterate what you said during your opening remarks. The benefit that Supervisor Wakamoto has given us for this water option, I'm just pleased that she's agreed to do this and bring all the experience and knowledge that she's gotten working on this, literally 24/7 for the time she's been supervisor. So with that, did we have a motion yet? I'm going to make a motion that we approve item 53. And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item 53. Any further questions? There being none. Madam Clerk. Supervisor Johnson, do you have a question?
Yes, more of a statement, Mr. Chair. This organization has been around since 96, as far as I can tell, holding the same conference. Mojave County Water Authority is a member, which we have a member sitting on, but I can never remember a report of this meeting ever being given to the board or any talk of its importance. It is something that the incoming supervisor or any supervisor wants to participate in, great, but to spend money on a civilian to attend, in my opinion, is just a waste of money. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And no further discussion. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto. Item 54. Discussion, possible action. Approve Riley Carlock to draft a letter of intended action to be sent to the directors of the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District. The drafting of a legal memorandum with the legal research supporting the analysis contained in the letter intended action, contingent letter to the Attorney General, to be sent only if needed and appropriate, and an expenditure in attorney's fees to Riley Carlock to complete the research and draft documents at an average rate of $350 an hour for a total fee of not more than $17,500. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 54. And with that, I'll make a motion for the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 55. Discussion, possible action for the ratification of the following action found by the Attorney General's office to be a violation of the open meeting law. The vote made by the Mojave County Board of Supervisors on December 18th of 2017 in favor of amending the April 6, 2015 park development agreement between Mojave County and Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave Community Park. The amendment that the board approved on December 18, 2017 provides that upon completion of the proposed park improvements, MVP agrees to lease the property to Mojave County for park and recreational purposes for 25 years. The park shall be known as Mojave Valley Fort Mojave Community Park. I have three people wishing to speak to this item.
Thank you, Chairman Watson, members of the, of the board and staff. Again, my name is Dan Ayler. My office, 2001 Highway 95, Bullhead City. I'm, I'm here on behalf, as I was roughly eight or nine months ago, of the BHHS Legacy Foundation, a not-for-profit foundation headquartered in Phoenix and of which I have served as the chairman for the last approximately 12 years. The foundation's interest in this particular item is simply that we have issued grants from literally the commencement of this park through, as recently as October 20th of this year. Those grants, if we add the last one, now are in the area of $1 million for the various improvements to the park. One of our typical and, and normal prerequisites as far as any grants, whether they're to such entities as Mojave Community College, where we have built two, two entire buildings for nursing, dental hygiene, rad tech services. In, in those instances, and similarly with Rotary Park, for instance, in Bullhead City, and a multitude of other facilities, we always require a proof satisfactory to the foundation of sustainability. That is really the, the issue that I am dealing with here today. On October 20th of this year, just less than a month ago, our, our board issued a grant that has not yet been finalized, but the vote is there, for an additional quarter of $1 million, $250,000 to build another set of restrooms, a score tower, scoreboards, snack bar at this facility. Obviously, that's a fair amount of money for any grant, any entity. And we would certainly encourage simply the readoption of the, of the earlier resolution. Without that, and without, again, an assurance, be it from the, the school board directly or the superintendent, which has previously been issued, or the county, we're simply not in a position to further contribute to, to this facility as we would not be with any other facility if they were not able to show their ability or that entity, the grantee's ability, to sustain the facility and the project that we're building. So I would encourage you to, you know, and all, all we're asking is, in effect, a reaffirmance, if you would, of the earlier resolution that was passed. And if you've got any other questions as far as the legacy's position in this, be happy to respond to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Questions for Mr. Ayler?
I want to thank Mr. Ayler and the Legacy Foundation. I know how hard it is to get those legacy grants. I have tried and they have stepped up. They are doing a fabulous job doing, going beyond what they first promised. And so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and thank you and the Legacy Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Michael Boone?
Michael Boone, 2210 Palaverie North, Lake Havasu City. Mr. Esplin can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe I sat in a meeting when this was all discussed about the trailer, them taking over the trailer of the county for the, in lieu of the taxes, back taxes owed by Mr., I think it's pronounced Mendy, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, I mispronounced his name. Mehdi, that's it, Mehdi. And there was a condition on those leases that certain things be met, and it was discussed quite, you know, in detail. Well, I submitted a public records request, as I mentioned earlier, for that information through Developmental Services, specifically Mr. Walsh's office, and I've gotten zero back on that. So I'm talking based on what I've been told, so if I'm inaccurate, please correct me, Mr. Esplin. But if he hasn't made those corrections and you guys took that property over, that, if I'm not mistaken, that property still does, that trailer still doesn't have a state permit on that, or a permit, yeah, permit. And there's a second trailer now that showed up out there. I was just recently out there. And I've been checking out there pretty frequently, taking pictures, and it appears that none of the items that was brought in front of this board that was supposed to be corrected have been corrected. So I'm wondering now that this has come back to you from the AG's office, if you can follow up and find out why those issues haven't been corrected, or if they have been corrected, why there's no change in any of the photos. And if you'd like the photos, I'd be happy to send them over to you, Mr. Esplin. But something's not right with this, it just doesn't sound right, and maybe you could take a little bit more time and look into this, because if I'm not correct, Mr. Mehdi also sits on a couple of planning commission boards. So you'd think somebody on a planning board and a planning advisory board would even be more cognizant of permit requirements and following the rules that they vote on on a regular basis. So I hope you take a little bit more look at this, other than just kind of recertifying what you already did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. I'm sure our next speaker will be able to speak to some of that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Watson and distinguished supervisors. I'm here in support of the Mojave Valley Fort Mojave Park. We've worked very hard in our community to establish a park. It has taken 25 years in the works to try to facilitate this park. The community has been so impacted by this park. You cannot believe how many kids, there was over 100 people down there this Saturday, and it wasn't even a function of any kind, it was just a normal park day. Have you seen, and I know that most of you supervisor, with the exclusion of one, have been down and looked at this park and seen what the great community, the Legacy Foundation, the businesses, and everybody has supported this park, it's been, made a great impact on our community, especially the kids. The kids that are unfortunate don't have the facilities in our area, and now they do. It's a fantastic park. I would ask that you ratify this. I realize that you had an open meeting glitch or law, or whatever you got going there, but we would sure appreciate if you would ratify it. We also have some funding through the people, business people, and individuals within the valley that have obligated themselves to put up $350 each, and we have 100 at this time, which would be $35,000, which go towards the maintenance of this park. The school has also helped us with this park and maintaining it, and they have the first right to use it with that maintenance that they've agreed to help us with. There's some question as to whether Riley Frye had the authority, which I believe he has had the authority, the board was informed of his actions, and prior to that Bud Scully also came forward and helped the park. This is a community park. We've never had one in District Five. This is so huge for our community and so great for the youth of our community, I can't imagine that anybody would vote against it. And I would sure appreciate it if you would ratify this, and please continue to show your support. I want to thank the Legacy Foundation and all of you supervisors for coming down and looking at this park, and the whole community for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Questions for Mr. Sherrill?
I have a question. How many acres are we irrigating with grass?
Well, it's a 39-acre park. We have four baseball fields and two soccer football fields. So I'm going to say approximately 18 acres. I mean, I'm guessing, but we never really measured it out, and that's probably what we have in there as far as irrigation. And then we have drip irrigation on the trees, so it's very conservative. It's, it works very well.
Do you have any idea how many acre-feet of water are required to water that?
We actually have an allocation from Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District for 39 acre-feet for the park, which has been substantial. Don't believe that we're using quite that much. We're probably using about 26 acre-feet, but as the park grows, we'll be able to, more fields and things of that nature, because we have such a nice, large park, we'll be able to facilitate that with the extra water that's been allocated.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Certainly.
I'd like to thank Mr. Ailer on behalf of Legacy Foundation and Mr. Sherrill, and all the other community people that have really invested in this park. One of the things that I love to see is when there is a commitment on the part of the community, and what has happened is the community has come together and put together this park that is probably valued now at $15 million. It has had a huge impact on the young people in the area, those that don't have the opportunity to do other things, but now have a place to either have athletic soccer or baseball, or just have families get together. There is no other park in District Five to service the community. They have, I believe, the largest dog park in Mojave County, if not the state, and we have people coming down from Golden Valley, as well as other areas in the county, to use this park. Thank you for your effort. Thank you for the effort of all the people that have volunteered time to make this happen. I applaud you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mehdi Azami also. He's the leader of our little group, and Dan Ailer, and all the rest of the people, and thank you so much for your support. I appreciate it.
Chairman Watson?
You know, everybody talks about the need for public-private partnerships, and this has been really a shining star. It's actually, what I've learned today, earlier by speaking with you, it's actually gone beyond what we were originally told with businesses stepping up. I hadn't, I didn't know that, and that makes me very happy. The maintenance is always something that we were sort of in our heads, and that the community has stepped up and sees the value and uses it. It's a big testimony, and I know all the work and time you guys put into it on your own, volunteering your own time and money, and Mehdi, and Chip, and Dan, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sherrill, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm a little confused with the school maintenance agreement. Are they maintaining this park for 25 years, or did that go away when Mr. Riley left?
No, that is in place, and the high school is helping us maintain the park. And with this 100 people and/or businesses that we're going to collect $350 from, that will go towards the maintenance also to offset some of the school monies that are being spent right now. So it should help significantly lower their cost and be more self-sufficient, and that's where we're at right now.
I'm just having some difficulty wrapping my head around the fact that there's five community parks in my district, one of them being the Walupi Mountain Park, but the other community parks in Butler, Chloride, Dolan Springs, and Golden Valley, they don't even have a patch of grass, let alone 18 acres, and we are, I am seeing the Parks Department have difficulty just keeping the weeds down. So I'm having trouble wrapping my hand around, my head around, 39 acre-feet of water when we're in a drought and we're trying to keep water in Lake Mead to prevent any rationing of water. So, you know, I voted to support this before, but now I'm given the opportunity to rethink it, and that's what I'm doing.
Well, you think 39 acre-feet of water is a lot, but I can tell you that it is a lot of water, but that this community park has baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields. We have drip lines for over 500 trees to provide shade for the park, and it is, the park does not wastewater. It has low-flow toilets, it has drip irrigation, it has sprinklers that are very efficient for our fields, and it's not overrun or run beyond what it should be run. It is very conservationist movement to make sure that we don't overuse our water, and I realize we have a shortage of water. But if we don't back up parks in our community, especially this park that we're talking about, and not to belittle any of the other parks, we would like to support all parks, that this has had such a huge community impact on us. Kids are able to go down, and maybe they don't have the facilities to drive, so they can walk, because it's close to the community. The high school's been able to use their football, soccer teams, and overflow. Even Bullhead City, when they have too many soccer teams in Bullhead City playing in a tournament, we get the overflow down in Mojave Valley and we have another place for them to play. It's huge. It's just a huge impact, and I would hope you'd consider, reconsider, and try to ratify this motion to make sure that it continues. We need your support.
Well, thank you for that, and, you know, you invited me to come down and look at the park, and it's very, very nice. I can't compliment you any more than what Supervisor Ankus already did that, but I also invite you to come and look at my community parks in Dolan Springs and Chloride, and Kingman, and Golden Valley, and see what they look like, because there's children there too.
We would be more than happy to do that, and, you know, if we could be support, I believe Mehdi and I, we go over and beyond. We go to Topoc, we've helped build the school, we've helped build the facilities for kids to be able to play in, in that facility where it was all gravel. You know, if we can help in any kind of manner, we'd be more than happy to, because we are really behind parks, and we really want to see it. Parks grow for the kids and the youth, and the adults to have someplace to go. We even have retired people that come out there, and we have one individual that comes out every morning in his wheelchair and goes the whole track on the cement. So it's not just for kids, it's for adults, kids, retired people, and as we continue to grow, we're going to be more efficient, and we will keep our water down as far as usage, and if there's better things that we can do to improve that, we will do it. So we're really looking for your support.
I would suggest maybe considering artificial turf.
Well, the only problem with artificial turf is that in the summertime, it gets so hot that you can't even step on it. I mean, it's a plastic, synthetic, and unfortunately, without shade over the field, that artificial turf will get about 150 degrees, and that will burn kids' feet and hands and everything else. That's why we've had to go to grass. And like I said, we have low-flow drips, we have low-flow sprinklers, and we're about as efficient as you can get.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Watson? You know, the first I've kind of heard about the water thing, it was never discussed before, and I think it is a good point, but I think it's a point that should have been made earlier before hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent, you know, and the approval of this board, even though we have to ratify it, we did, we did kind of approve it, so they went based on, you know, what we were saying to them, so I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well.
And Ms. Chairman, if I may? Hendricks. Just to put it in perspective, how much that water means, that amount acre-foot of water grows about six acres of alfalfa. So it's very, very minimal is what they're talking about. The other thing that I wanted to clarify for the board, we do have an operation and maintenance budget for all of the other parks, and unfortunately, it doesn't contain sufficient funds to seed those parks and to provide water. $0, $0 county dollars goes towards the maintenance and operation currently of this park. It's all privately and legacy-funded and provided by the school district. So as partnerships goes, it's probably as ideal of a partnership as what we could imagine from a government perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. My comment, I can't think of any better beneficial use for that water than the hundreds of kids that play ball, enjoy it, and the community being able to enjoy your park down there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we reratify the agreement from December 18th. Let me see, I guess I should read this.
Before we get to the motion, can I make a quick statement?
Mr. Esplin.
Thank you. So as part of the requirements for the open meeting law, let me pull this up. One of the requirements, not only do we need to do this notice that we are ratifying this decision, the decision being that the vote made on December 18th, 2017 was a violation of the open meeting law for failing to give proper notice in the agenda. The open meeting law also requires that we provide a detailed written description of the action to be ratified in all deliberations, consultations, and decisions by members of the public body that preceded and related to such action. The written description shall also be included as part of the minutes of the meeting at which ratification is taking place. So what we did was, we put on the notice of the agenda that there is a specific, excuse me, a detailed written description of the action that we wish to require, wish to ratify, and also, we also included all of the deliberations, consultations, and decisions by members of the public that preceded that. That document is about an 80-page document, and it is available at the clerk of the board during her regular business hours. You can review that. Also, you could make a copy of that, but I believe there's copy fees that you would have to pay. But also, it is available online at the county's website, if you go to MojaveCounty.us. If you go to the public notices, it's the Notice of Ratification, November 5th, 2018. So I believe we followed all the requirements, and I'm also just putting that on the record so that it's in the minutes that we have done that detailed statement and asking to have that incorporated herein so that we have followed with the open meeting law requirements. So now, if you wish, you can go forward with the motion if you like.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like some more discussion, if I may.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, sir. If Nathan can bring up the slides. At our October 2nd, 2017 meeting, Mr. Ozamy spoke before the board and vouched that, you know, he would work with the county to ensure the issues I brought up were taken care of. I'm not sure if the slides are up yet, but on the first three slides, you can see that they've not been taken care of. Are the slides up yet, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, they are.
Thank you. Not only is the trailer in violation of Mojave County Building Code, it is a safety risk for the public. As you can see on these same slides, two through four, there's rebar, pipes, bricks, and several other hazards around the trailer, which is now Mojave County's trailer, that we should have been taking care of, that the public could easily get hurt on. This condition of this trailer is a major liability issue for the county. The trailer is right inside the front gate of the park and can easily be accessed by anyone coming into the park. And here we are a year later, and from what I can see, the condition of this portion of the park looks worse today than it did a year ago. If you go to Slide 5, you can see some improvements have been made by the park within the last year. They put up several shade structures around the entire park. Except for a few, there's really no seating in the park. Slide 6 through 8 show the ballfields, batting cages, football field goals, the court and the playground equipment. I put those in to show that, you know, there has been some movement there. But as you can see from Slide 6, there is a tremendous amount of grass at the park. The watering, seeding, and just maintaining this park is going to cost the county a lot of money if we go on to another agreement. I'm not sure if that's something that we can talk about today, maybe Mr. Esplin would have a ruling on that to find out if Mr. Lutowski's even looked at what the cost could be, because we have no contract in front of us for verification from the school that they are going to maintain this park. Is that something we can discuss today, Mr. Esplin, or not?
Yes, we can discuss peripherally about it. Yes, we can discuss peripherally about it. We cannot make a decision today about entering into a new agreement with the school board or not, but it is still related to the park. So yes, we could talk about it. But I wouldn't go into far detailed discussions going way too far from the agenda item. But if you wish, we can talk about issues related to maintenance of the park and concerns you have about the park and things like that.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I would ask Mr. Lutowski, and obviously, he might not have an answer. Maybe he has a ballpark figure. If the park were to be taken over by the county, and that would have to be a different agreement than this one today. This one today is just to bring it back before us. But do we have any kind of estimate what that might cost us yearly?
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Watson and Supervisor Johnson. Staff has, in previous contemplations of the Fort Mojave, of the Mojave Valley Community Park by the board, and this has been some time ago, has done research both from the perspective of in-house maintenance, which would certainly incur hiring on additional staff, as well as a contract-driven maintenance. And in conferring with our Parks Administrator, Hal Barton, and apologize, we don't have the information in front of us, but we do recall staff presenting an annual maintenance and operation estimate at approximately $300,000 annually. But again, please understand that this is just off of our rough memory, based on what we believe we've put together as far as an in-house proposal, as far, and well as a contract proposal. Both of them kind of aligned expense-wise per year to about that $300,000 or on that level.
Does that take into consideration?
Thank you. Does the park have?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Watson, Supervisor. Does the park have the $300,000 available to take over this without increasing fees or going to the general fund for money?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, despite the action on Item 49 this morning, Parks is beginning an initial rollout of a substantial infrastructure replacement program. In fact, our five-year plan for Walpine Mountain Park is upwards of $900,000, $900,000 of infrastructure improvements. And for Davis Camp, the five-year plan calls out about $2.3 million of infrastructure improvements. So to answer your question directly, we're not necessarily positioned to take on such an expense with all the revenue generators on that park, Fort, I'm sorry, Mojave Valley Community Park, without at least taking a step back and contemplating where our fees may need to be then to take that on.
Thank you. If Supervisor Wakamoto has a question on this before I go on to my other slides, I'm going to let her ask her questions so she doesn't have to come back.
No, go ahead.
I'll have a comment about this. May I say something?
Certainly.
Today, this morning, since we've been doing this, the maintenance is per the agreement, the school, and now this committee of businesses coming together, I've been assured that the maintenance is, it's not part of the agreement for the county to be doing the maintenance. So this is just all speculation, and I believe unwarranted. Right now, we're ratifying, reratifying the agreement that we initially, I voted yes on, and that's the one I intend to vote yes on, not anything else. So I think this is just all, you know, what-ifs.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the slides, on Slide 9 and 10, you can see a small and a big dog park. The dog park is probably one of the nicest parts of the park. My only concern there with the dog park is not having a source of water for animals. Maybe I missed it, but I'm not seeing a water source in the area. And the dog park's inhabitants, who, for example, have hoses or water spigots for dogs to get water, water from. While there is a bucket and a milk jug filled with water, there was no permanent source of water. On Slide 11, you can see a photo from this past week and one from 2017. And you can tell there are still several areas around the park with piles of dirt and debris piled up. My concern with this goes back to liability. All it takes is one person falling or tripping over something. The areas like this should be roped off from the public. And I understand they're in construction, but still, when you're dealing with the public, you have to take precautions because of liability. On Slide 12, you can see the first photo. On the left shows a water spigot located in the back of the county-owned trailer. It was dripping slowly, but you can tell it's been dripping around the dirt for a long time, and we're talking about wasting water. On Slide 13, you can see a trail that was placed in the park sometime between January and April of 18. And I believe the second trailer has not been moved since then. It is locked up, and two tires are flat, and would need to be replaced should the trailer be moved. I'm not exactly sure how this fits in. I have this question for the clerk of the board. Back in December 18th, the chairman signed the previous contract that we're talking about today. And I've never seen a completed contract. Do you have a signed contract by Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley Park?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, no, I have not received a fully executed document backed, from my records.
Okay, so we had an action back in December, and nobody followed up with it. Getting to the contract, just to make sure, Mr. Esplin can correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're doing today does not obligate the county into taking over park management. It just says that it will be brought back for consideration at a later time. The contract itself, there's no timeline for completion now or acceptance by the county. It is open-ended, and I don't believe that's how we do business. Original contract was to be back to us in April 2016. We're now two and a half years past that date with just empty promises. We've already talked about the school, and we have no paperwork in front of us saying they have it. We have no idea of costs presented, and with the size of the park, it would take full-time personnel. I just believe that this is, you know, the wrong thing to do because with the Legacy Foundation talking about the money they want to put into it, until we have a vote on if we're going to actually take this park in, we rethink what we're doing. Because it can come back, and the board can vote and say, well, it's a nice park and everything, but we do not have the funds to do it, and now who's going to run this park? That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson.
Mr. Sherrill.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Buster Johnson, the park that you showed the pictures of had some debris in one side of the park. That debris has all been removed. It's obvious you have not been down there. I'm not sure you've ever been down there. I don't know where you got your pictures from. But we have never created a situation where we have a liability or tried not to. There's always going to be excavation within a park. There's always going to be improvements. And that is what the situation was from those old photos that you provided, this council. I would urge you to please come down. I believe that I've asked you before to come down and look at the park at that time. And you may not recall, you said, "I don't believe Mojave Valley needs a park." Regardless, I'm not trying to bash anybody, but I would sure ask that you come down and look at what the community has built down there in that valley. That park, like I said, there's no debris there anymore. Anytime we have to do any excavation, we try to put markers and stuff for safety. And again, I would reiterate, I would ask you to please come down and look at how nice this park is and how it's been built and everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
Chairman Watson.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I'll reiterate that it's a bold-faced lie that I ever said that Fort Mojave didn't need a park. I always supported it when Supervisor Stockwell was doing it because it was going to be an improvement district and didn't ask for any county funds. These pictures were taken last Tuesday. So the idea that I'm bringing pictures back from any other time is ridiculous. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Watson. I just wanted to ask Supervisor Angus if she would consider continuing this until the 19th. There's a lot going on here, and it would still be...
What's going to happen between now and the 19th?
Ron Gold will be seated here, and this will be his district at that time. And we would still be under the deadline where we could answer this to the Attorney General's office.
I honestly don't see the point of it. You know, we, again, we made certain promises that a lot of money has been spent on. And the agreements are there. Again, we had, this is just ratification, so it's just confirming something that we did before. You know, if that's going to be the motion, I'm going to vote no on it.
Don't you have a motion on the floor?
Oh, I started to do.
There's no motion?
And Chairman Watson, if I could address some of the issues that have been floating around here. The board can continue it to another date, as long as we're in that 30-day window. The reason why I brought it back today is to give the board as much leeway as possible. We can do it today, or you can continue it to two weeks from now. If you do continue it, it would take a vote of the board to continue it, just like Supervisor Angus pointed out. She would likely vote against it. But, I mean, we would have to take a vote to do that.
But what's going to hap, what's the purpose? That's what I'm asking. What's the purpose of continuing? Like, what will happen? What's going to happen in this two-week period that's going to make it easier for you guys to vote on it? I mean, is there going to be something more clarified?
That's for you guys to say. I don't know. I'm just talking from the legal standpoint. We could vote on it today to ratify it. You could choose not to ratify it, or we could continue it. Those are kind of your three options in front of the board today on that. If we continue it, though, I'm going to have to make some changes to the notice part of it because I've dated things as if we're going to take action today. So I'll have to change some of the notice, we'll have to have the special notice that we put on here, we'll have to put on the next agenda, and I'll work with the clerk of the board to do that. And then I'd also have to update the detailed description, and I'm perfectly fine doing that. Just to answer some of the other things that Supervisor Johnson asked me to weigh in about, it's correct, we do not have a lease for this property. What would happen is, if we ratify this today, we would agree to give them, give MVP additional time to work on the improvements, and when the improvements are done, they would come back to the board with the lease for the board to vote on whether to accept the lease or not. There may be terms in that lease that we may not find acceptable, at which point we would negotiate or work with them and say, let's see if we can work something out to get an acceptable lease that the county would be willing to accept in order to do that. That's what would come back to the board.
And supervise, the new supervisor from District 5 will be in on all of those because this is basically something this board has done. We're ratifying something this board has done, but going forward, the new supervisor will obviously have the say in how we go forward in his district.
Okay, so ratifying this will not obligate us to taking over the park? Because right now, I'm hesitant to do that if that comes up in the future. So is that correct? Ratifying this agenda item doesn't obligate us to accept maintenance?
That's correct. But what it does obligate us to, in good faith, to work with them to see about trying to work together a lease. I said that previously. I'm trying to be consistent throughout this whole thing so that I'm not misleading anyone that, and we had a discussion about this, Supervisor Johnson and I, in open session at the December 18th meeting, where it does not obligate us. I agree with that. It does not obligate us to take over the lease. However, we are obligated in good faith to see if we can, because we're telling them, hey, when you're done with your improvements, you need to come back with the lease. So we would try to work with them to reach an agreement where we would lease the park, where we would take over the lease. It would still be owned by the owner of the property. We would do the lease, and we would run the park. But we would not be obligated to accept that lease. We would not be obligated to take it over unless we could reach an agreement. And we don't know the composition of the board. We don't know when that's going to happen. The board members could change and stuff and things. So we don't know what the future entails, but you're right, it does not obligate us to accept the lease. But we are, I feel like we have an obligation in good faith to see if we can work something to where we can reach an agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Esplin. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman, but...
No problem.
But, Mr. Esplin, I agree with everything you've said, Mr. Esplin. The one thing that does bother me on this extension that's being given is that it's open-ended. It, I mean, the 25-year lease could expire before we have a date to have anything brought back to us. And after this last time, when we had a contract that was passed by the board, and the park group didn't even see fit to sign the contract, is that really the way we want to do a contract? Is without an ending date on it to have some kind of finality to it?
Can I, may I answer that?
Mr. Esplin.
Supervisor Johnson, I agree with you. I don't like the open-ended portion of that, of this amendment. I don't. It does give me concern as well. And when you're in the process of negotiating with an opposing party, you try to work things out, you try to reach common ground. Sometimes you give a little, you take a little, you see how far you can get. And this was the best that we could work out with the, with MVP, with the representatives of MVP. But I agree with you. I don't like the open-ended part of it. They could be done with this next week, or they could be done with it two years from now. We don't know. And I do, I have my reservations as well about that. I still think the board can vote in favor of this if they wish, but I share your concerns. But hopefully, it will be done in a reasonable amount of time in the near future as best they can. So I agree with you, but we can still go forward with it if the board wishes to. You certainly can.
Ask the park committee if there is a timeline?
You know, we've been building on this park for a couple of years. A lot of community money has gone into it, Legacy Foundation, our own personal funds, our own personal time and everything else. We're trying to get this ratified so that we can go forward and get extra funds to finish this park through the Legacy Foundation and everything else. If you stall this and don't ratify this, Legacy Foundation, as you've heard from Dan, that we will not get this $250,000. If we don't get $250,000, that's going to stall us some more. We are trying to finish this park so that the county doesn't have any expense on any modifications or improvements on this park, which means when we do get a lease signed with you, that you won't have any expenditures for doing more improvements. You won't have all that expense. We'll have the park done to a complete factor that you'll be satisfied with. As far as a lease, I can speak to the lease myself. I'm a family member that owns that property. We have agreed to a dollar-an-acre lease to the county, and we are more than welcome to sit down and talk to you about a lease that is, would make you comfortable and make the county comfortable. We will be glad to do that. At this point, we need to move forward so that we can continue to build this park. If you stop this or don't ratify it, you're going to stagnate that park and not being able to, for us to complete it and to move forward. Because we can do great things with our community. We're not asking, you know, for money from you. We're asking for you to please get behind us so we can continue to build this park and finish it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sherrill, could you tell us about how much money has been put into the park between donations, donated labor? I know that Mojave County put in $250,000 upfront dollars, but it seems to me that the value of that park's got to be up in the $3 or $4 million range with...
We got a value from Legacy Foundation at one time, and they came down, it's probably been a year or so ago, and they gave a valuation of about $6 or $7 million.
$7 million?
We have gotten, as Dan has stated, the money from Legacy. We got $250,000 from Mojave County. We have probably gotten close to $1 million from individuals in like-kind and cash contributions. Mehdi and I have put our own blood, sweat, and money in this thing. I can't even tell you how much money and sweat we've put into this thing, along with a lot of community members that have helped us. I would sure urge you to please ratify this so we can move forward. If you don't, we're going to be stagnated, and we're going to have to wait for more action from you. So I would sure appreciate your support. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
No, I, I'm making the motion right now.
Making the motion.
Okay, to ratify the... Brian, how do I have to say this to make this correct?
You would ratify the following action found, just read the, just read how it's written.
Okay, ratify...
I move, I, I would say, I would put in the words, "I move to ratify," and then it's going to be...
"I move to ratify the vote made by..." From there? Or from the very beginning?
"I move to ratify the following action found by..."
"I move to ratify the following action found by the Arizona, Arizona Attorney General's Office to be a violation of the open meeting law. The vote made by the Mahavi County Board of Supervisors on December 18th, 2017, in favor amending the April 6, 2015 park development agreement between Mahavi County and Mahavi Valley Fort Mahavi Community Park. The amendment that the board approved on December 18th, 2017, provides that upon completion of the proposed park improvements, MVP agrees to lease the property to Mahavi County for the, for park and recreational purposes for 25 years. The park shall be known as Mahavi Valley Fort Mahavi Community Park."
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, I feel we're all called about.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe that's the last item on the...
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.